Hello, I'm Donna Rodriguez. Welcome to the Kingston School Committee Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate, lasting about 30 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to four questions, but that will depend on the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered or that they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. Let's get started. Today, we're speaking with Timothy Lewis, one of the three candidates for Kingston School Committee in the Kingston Town Election. Tim, thanks for joining us today.
Donna, thank you for hosting me and to PAC TV for hosting me and the other candidates. This gives us a great opportunity to speak directly to Kingston voters, many of us who know us and some who don't. So, thank you for the opportunity.
And we appreciate all of you coming in and being able to share your views with voters in the town.
No, it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
So, let's just get right into the questions, if you don't mind. What do you believe is the role of a school committee member? And what do you see as the priorities of the committee?
Okay, so first and foremost, I view my role. So, I come at it from a unique perspective where I'm an educator myself. I make my career in a South Shore public school system. And I'm also a parent where I have four young children, who three of my older children are in the Kingston Elementary Schools. So, I have a unique perspective in that sense. And I believe that our number-one priority as a school committee is to advocate for parents who are the chief advocates for their children. And I've had the privilege to do that on my time on the school committee, especially through some challenging times, where families felt that their voices need to be heard. And I view our primary role as to advocate for families whose number-one job is to advocate for their children.
Are there any additional priorities for the committee that you see?
Well, without question, budget is first and foremost, something that we have to take very, very serious. Responsible budgeting for schools in the community as a whole is critical. And then also, of course, all policy is governed through the school committee. So, taking a careful look at everything that comes across our desk in the realm of policy. That could be employment policy, curriculum, a host of things. But I view my primary role as to advocate for families. And in doing that, it touches into budget, touches into curriculum, staffing, and resources in general, so that all the students' needs can be met. Not just a select few, all of the students.
Thank you. So, how do you see your role in working with other town departments, especially when it comes to advocating for your own organization during budget development, when all departments are really looking for pieces of the same pie with sometimes very limited resources?
So, yes, we can all agree that the barrel is not endless. You know, my dad used to joke that we don't have a money tree. Neither does the town of Kingston. So, we have to be extraordinarily responsible when we're looking at budgets. What I have learned is even the staunchest fiscally-conservative individuals believe that schools should be fully funded. What is the number-one driver of property values? Schools. So, like I said, even the most staunchest fiscal conservatives will share that schools need to be fully funded. We're fortunate. We are a resource-rich community in the sense that our schools have an abundance of resources for our students. Those have to be paid for. But it has to be balanced. We have to consider what the other departments are asking for, what the other departments need, because those are equally important, right? Police, fire, our DPWs, they are very, very important in their own right. But schools, 99 of 100% of people will tell you, they need to be fully funded.
Thank you. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing our schools today? And how can the school committee help in dealing with those challenges?
So, you know, there's always been challenges. I would argue that after the past two years, we're still navigating some significant challenges. But I do want to credit Dr. Kerry Whipple and Mike Banbury and Jill Prue and the rest of the administration, who showed some leadership despite some really, really challenging times. The classroom teachers have gone above and beyond the call of duty. And I thank the parents of the community, who have made a very, very difficult situation better through their work on their end. So, we're still going to be navigating the fallout from COVID restrictions that were put on our kids. We're going to have to support them. I know that there are gaps in learning because of remote learning and some hybrid learning that we need to address and address fairly aggressively. I'm also very mindful of the need for increased resources. I said previously, we are resource-rich in many ways. But I foresee that due to circumstances, through no one's fault, that we may increase in our resources. And that has to be looked at very carefully in a collaborative way, so that every student's needs are met. So, I'm also looking closely at the potential for a population bubble in Kingston. We've had an abundance of new homes built, which is wonderful because we're bringing in a lot of new people to our community that bring some value. But we want to be mindful that we are in a position to serve all of the citizens. And if each one of those homes sends two or three students in the next three to five years, we need to be prepared to serve those students.
Do you, in addition to the housing of COVID, are there other challenges you see facing the school system right now in Kingston?
So, of course, the fallout due to COVID. But I do think that, and I'll give you an example. We're still eyeing out our budget. But the school administration came to us and we're looking to add positions. And of course, we take a very responsible approach to budgeting. We may be looking at increasing our staffing down the road, and that might be a challenge to navigate. But what I share with all school administrations and even members of the community, as long as we have a rationale for it, if we're able to create a rationale for why our school needs X, Y, and Z, I know that the Kingston residents will support that. You know, when my wife and I came to Kingston in 2013, I was struck almost immediately at the love of community, the love that families have for their children, and how much they value education. So, that's why I sought to be on school committee, because we have so many shared values throughout this community. But as long as we have a rationale for addressing these problems, that the overwhelming majority of the community is going to support us.
Thank you. What are your thoughts about how the district and the schools can encourage involvement and participation from families?
So, that takes leadership. So, the administration, and I've already spoken about Mr. Banbury and Dr. Whipple. I think they do a tremendous job communicating with the families in this district. So, one administrator once shared to me in a different district, "If the families don't know we're doing it, it's not happening." And there's some wisdom in that, right? So, it's up to us as educators to communicate with families what the classroom looks like, what the school community looks like, what services are being provided. And I think that our current administration does a tremendous job communicating with the families, reaching them out, inviting them in. Unfortunately, the last two years, there were some restrictions about who could come into the school and have those shared experiences with their child's classroom teacher, their child, and themselves. But we're looking for that to be increasing over the next few months and obviously into next year.
And as you said, you know, now that things are lightening up a little bit for restrictions with having people come into the school, in addition to communication, are there other things that you think could help in encouraging further involvement from families with what's happening in the schools?
So, there are schools that host community events. So, for example, you can host community meetings where a grade level can take on a subject that the school is embracing, like an initiative around maybe social-emotional learning. Grade five could take a community meeting where members of the community are invited in. And when I say members of the community, I primarily mean families are invited in to be a part of what's happening on a day-to-day basis. So, you can give a snapshot of what the school looks like in our community meeting, and families get to see their children in action in their element. So, that's something that could happen. I foresee things similar to that happening as we progress forward out of the COVID restrictions.
Thank you. Many townspeople may think that money is the solution to improvement. But what significant improvements do you feel can happen without additional monies?
So, one of the things, if we could create more time in our staff's day to do what's called common planning and working across the grade levels. I'm not saying that's not happening. Now it is. But better is a never-ending quest, right? So, if we could create more time through administrative planning or policy, allowing grade levels, cross-discipline units, specialist teachers, special educators, to collaborate and work together to formulate lesson plans, inclusion, co-teaching opportunities. I think that is a way that we could really advance our educational structure without costing the taxpayers a dime.
Thank you. Now, for the next few minutes, before we close up, I'd like you to have the opportunity to talk directly to the viewers and the residents. And tell them about topics that are important to you that you maybe haven't had an opportunity to talk about yet in this interview. And also, tell them a little bit more about yourself if you feel that there are things that they don't know about you or your family or your ideals for school committee.
Great, thank you. So, as I previously mentioned, my wife and I came to Kingston in 2013. We looked long and hard at which community we would make our home in on the South Shore. Like many families, we decided on Kingston for a multitude of reasons. But first and foremost was the love of community that was evident throughout the residents. So, we moved to Clifton Drive off of Grove Street. And I joke with my Quincy friends, that's where I'm from. I moved to Kingston and I've never looked back. And my wife and I have been extraordinarily happy raising our four children in Kingston. My oldest is 11, my second oldest is eight, number three is six. And then the baby, even though she's three, we still call her the baby. But we've been very, very happy making our home in Kingston. And it's not just the schools, it's the baseball fields, it's the hockey rink, it's the Reed Center, it's the library, it's the religious groups. We've been very, very happy here. And I just want to serve the community in which makes us very happy. I previously mentioned how I make my career in education. I took a unique path to the classroom. When I graduated high school, I went into the building trades. There's great honor and dignity working in the union. I was a union carpenter, and I learned a great deal. But I knew that I wanted to try something else. I went back to college at age 24, earned a degree, and began teaching in 2007. And it's been a wonderful experience wherever I've gone. I've had public school experience, private school experience, high school, elementary. But the majority of my career has been at the elementary level, where I currently serve as a school counselor, meeting the needs of the student population in the area of social-emotional learning. My role as an educator is to allow, to support a student so that they are in the classroom available to learn. It's tremendously fulfilling. You know, there are days where we work harder than others. But again, it's tremendously fulfilling. And I think that's why I'm uniquely prepared to serve the schools in Kingston for the next three years. Not only do I work in education, I work in elementary education. I've experienced from the inside and the out, because I have young families, what the last two years have been like. I know what the social-emotional needs are, both in our families and in our schools. And I think that makes me uniquely qualified to serve in this role. So, I'm excited about the opportunity to continue the work I'm doing. And I humbly seek your vote on April 23rd. Again, please, I humbly ask for your vote, Timothy Lewis, on April 23rd.
Tim, thank you so much for joining us today. We really appreciate your time. And we wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and also in the election. Let's get started with, what do you believe is the role of a school committee member? And what do you see as the priorities of the committee?
That's a great question, Donna. Before getting into the race, I wasn't really clear on what the school committee member position entailed. But I did get a lot of information, speaking to current members on the school committee, and have a much better idea of what the role entails. Really, it's to be an advocate for the school, the faculty, the staff, and also for the children and the families. I think that's a very important thing, to make sure that everybody's voice is heard and all of their concerns are presented to the school committee. The school committee member does have an important position in terms of helping to identify the superintendent. And that will help to bring together the staff that will help support them. Obviously, working on the budget and addressing any policy updates, those are all parts of the school committee member's role. But I feel like the school committee position that I would be looking to get into would help to be an advocate for all of the community and make sure everybody's voice is heard. I feel my current professional experience makes me a good candidate for that.
Thank you very much. So, how do you see your role in working with other town departments, especially when it comes to advocating for your own organization during budget development, when all departments are looking for pieces of the same pie, sometimes with really limited resources?
Working with a budget is very difficult and definitely with different departments having to try to slice up that pie, as you say. I think it's very important to bring everybody into the same room and to make clear what our end goal is. If everybody is aware of what each department's role is in the budget, what their slice is essentially, we could talk about what is going to be needed to make some concessions from each department. Because at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we're moving forward the full school, the school's goal of, you know, making sure that the children have all the resources they need, the faculty, and everybody that is affiliated with the school. I think that's very important, to make sure that everybody feels like they have a voice in terms of what they can offer, in terms of whether they need to give up a little bit on their end of the budget to make sure that everybody has the resources that they need.
Thank you very much. Moving on, what do you believe is the biggest challenge facing our schools today? And how can the school committee help?
I would say probably the biggest challenge probably is making sure that the budget is in line with the vision of the school. There's a lot of needs for the Kingston schools. From my experience in terms of following the school committee meetings, there's some aging infrastructure in KES and KIS. I know those need to be addressed. So, with a budget and having half of the town's taxes being applicable and applied to that school budget, I think everybody wants to know where this money is going, how we're spending it. So, being clear and providing transparency to the community in terms of where this money is being spent, I think is a big challenge. You know, we can't hide anything with a budget. We need to scrutinize it. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, everybody needs to feel like they have a piece in bringing the whole school forward.
In addition to the physical plant challenges that Kingston faces right now, what do you think some of the other challenges are that the schools are facing directly?
I think, you know, most recently with the lifting of the mask mandates, getting back to that sense of normalcy, I think, has been a challenge. But also, it's great to see a lot of the children thriving with, you know, being able to hop off the bus, not wearing masks, you know, smiling and seeing everybody interacting with one another, you know, at the school. It was a challenge for those few years, being masked, being away from one another. I know all of the children and a lot of families, you know, there was a lot of mixed feelings about it, but I think we've come through. We're not, you know, we're not through it all yet. I feel like we're at a great point right now. But I think that's a challenge, you know, having that sense of normalcy again after two long years. It was a struggle for a lot of folks. And, you know, there's a lot of developmental delays that have resulted from it, where, you know, hopefully, we're able to catch up over the next, you know, in the short term, being able to see all the facial expressions of the children, the teachers being able to communicate more clearly with everybody. I think that's going to be a challenge that we're probably not going to, you know, be able to overcome right away. But it is something that the schools, I think in general, will be able to get through.
And in addition to the budgetary process, where do you think are the other roles or other ways that the school committee itself can help to support the schools in overcoming some of these challenges?
I think just being an advocate for the families and, you know, the parents that may see and experience how their children are interacting at home compared to what they're hearing at the schools. You know, there's a lot of, you know, differences in the way that children interact at school when they're with their friends and with their teachers versus, you know, when they're at home, you know, they might feel a little more restricted possibly. I feel like, you know, listening to the families, if there is any trouble at home, maybe they're not getting the support they need. Being that voice for them, I feel, is a big role of the school committee members. So, we could be a forum for them to come. They could provide, you know, their stories. And then we could take it back to the administration and see what resources we can provide, if there is anything that can be provided to those families.
Thank you. Now, tell us a little bit about your thoughts about how the district and schools can encourage involvement and participation from families.
You know, I think it's tough to get involved by some families. I feel like as people try to be vocal and be more involved, there's a lot of scrutiny that comes along with that. You know, it could be on social media, it could be, you know, personally, there could be little groups, social groups, where folks may not be too keen on someone's views. I think, you know, the way that maybe the school district could get more families involved is probably having more, you know, family nights or, you know, volunteer opportunities. I know I have been a classroom volunteer, where we've been asked to come in and be a parent for the day. I've volunteered at the library at the KES. So, those are opportunities that are available. I think it just needs to be more advertised to the families of the students and provide a little more information as to what they're trying to do and why we want, you know, the families to be more involved. I think the children, you know, they especially love it. When my son goes in and sees me in his classroom, he has a huge smile on his face. And all of his friends that know me from coaching them on soccer fields, they all have huge smiles. So, I think being able to provide that type of, you know, environment for the children and letting the families know that, you know, being a part of their education, doing crafts with them, or just being a teacher's helper for the day, I think it'll make, you know, a big difference and probably bring some more families in.
Thank you. Now, many townspeople might think that money is the solution to improvement. But what significant improvements do you think can occur without money?
You know, it is tough to make improvements without money. I mean, we are always restricted by a budget and, you know, it's always being cut. Nobody wants to, you know, spend more than they need to in terms of, you know, just throwing money after potential problems. I think some of the things that can be done that doesn't involve any money is probably, you know, just making sure that families are more involved. If it is a matter of helping out in the classroom to provide, you know, that additional assistance, providing supplies to teachers, fundraisers, such as the Harlem Wizards that's going on in coming days. I feel like those types of things would be able to not add to the budget, but be able to bring in outside fundraising for the schools. You know, having that sense of involvement and community with the schools, I think, goes a long way. You know, again, having the parents involved or any family member involved with the school, helping it to grow and be, you know, a safe space for the children, I think, is a big, big advantage. And we need to look for ways to promote that.
Thank you. So, now you're going to have a couple of minutes for closing remarks or to address anything that wasn't brought up that you want viewers to hear, things like topics that you're particularly interested in and to tell people a little bit about, more about you and what you bring to the table in your candidacy.
All right, thanks, Donna. I'm sure some of you may know me. My name is Michael Chikane. I've been a Kingston resident since 2016. I moved here with my wife Erin, you know, six years ago. And we wanted to be closer to family. That was the main reason. Once we settled into our home here, we knew this was going to be our forever, forever location and where we wanted to raise our children. Andrew, my oldest son, is in third grade at KIS. And my younger son, Dano, is in first grade at KES. And they have enjoyed every minute there. In fact, the reason we moved down here was because of our family. Our nieces and nephew are products of the Silver Lake Schools. They've went through KES, KIS, the middle school, high school. And they've grown tremendously after graduation. They've had strong bonds with everybody they've met since they've been here. And it was that sense of community that the school offered that really made us want to be involved with the town. You know, ever since my children started going to school, you know, I tried to volunteer as much as I can. I was a classroom parent. I was a volunteer at KES Library. I am currently on the Board of Trustees for the Kingston Public Library. And I coach my kids' soccer teams on the weekend. So, I like to be involved. And I have been, you know, involved for those six years, trying to, you know, have that sense of community and being a part of the town. Professionally, I am a project manager for a benefits outsourcing company. And with that role, there's a lot of delegation that needs to, you know, be involved. I need to have time management and work with multiple, you know, groups and various personalities, you know. There are strong folks and there are other types of personalities where I just need to bring them together and make sure that we deliver a solution that is appropriate for our clients. And I think those experiences, the volunteer experience, my professional experience, makes me an ideal candidate for this position, of bringing the various groups together, the various departments within town, to make sure that everybody understands our end goal, which is to have a thriving school, which is at the center of our community, and to make sure that everybody is involved. I think that is a big thing where, you know, everybody needs to have a vetted interest in the schools because that makes us prosper collectively. You know, with my children moving on to KIS and eventually the middle school, I want to be part of the direction that we're going in for the middle school and the high school eventually. So, if elected, I would be an advocate for all of the families, all of the faculty, the staff, for the betterment of the school and of our community. You know, whether you vote for me or another of the qualified candidates on April 23rd, I ask that you just please go out and vote, make your voice heard. And, you know, hopefully, you know, we, you know, can move together in this, in this race and make sure that, you know, our school is thriving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for participating in this interview. We really wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. Today, we're speaking with Sheila Vaughn, one of the three candidates for the Kingston School Committee in the Kingston Town Election. Sheila, thanks so much for joining us today.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate that.
Well, love to just dive right into this. We've set the timer for 30 minutes for us. And tell me, what do you believe is the role, excuse me, of a school committee member? And what do you see as the priorities of this committee?
Sure. So, there are two committees in Kingston. And so, there are the Kingston Elementary Committee, which is the K through two, and then also the three through six. And we do have, so have the preschool, the integrated preschool. And then there's the Silver Lake Committee, which is the middle school and high school. So, and that is the three towns. So, really, for the Kingston Elementary School, which is what I, which I'm running for, really is that pre-K through sixth grade. And it's for those students who, you know, are moving into our town and/or parents who've been here forever. We have our townies. My husband's a townie. We have our townies, or my husband's a townie, I like to say. And, you know, really going through that system. Some school systems have one school, some systems have, you know, two. We are very lucky, we have the two schools. So working with those principals, working with the administrators to to have the best system we can out there with our small town.
But it's very, it's a very engaged town.
It is a very engaged town.
So how do you see it in this position? How would you see your role in working with other town departments, especially when it comes to advocating for your own organization during things like budget development, when all departments are looking for pieces of the same pie, honestly, with limited resources?
Well, it's funny, we have to talk about this day, because I was just on capital planning last night. And so it is very difficult in this role. I am also a selectman in our town of Kingston. And so knowing budgetary rules, this is my ninth year on the Kingston Elementary Committee. And so being that I have seen the finances and seeing what towns have gone through, there are good years and there are bad years, and really being able to understand that police, fire, you know, streets, streets and parks, they all have to have a piece of it as well. And it's not just the schools. The schools are a big piece of the budget, so it is very difficult for people to come and see, well, why does the schools get 3% but you're telling me 2%? And that's a tough role to be in. So really, we have to understand the rules and what can be kicked down the can, as we'd like to say, or what needs to be done now? What are our priorities? And we really worked hard with the superintendent and with the town administrator. We've actually started to have meetings quarterly regarding these things with our capital planning, having a five-year strategic plan when it comes to our capital planning, what are the big projects coming up? So the town isn't not knowing that there's going to be a roof coming for the elementary school in a few years, which will be coming in a few years. So those are important things to have, and those conversations have to happen early, not the year you need it. It needs to be years in advance to know that those things are going to be happening. And so I'm happy that that is starting to happen. But some years, we won't get what we need, and that is a difficult situation. We used to get $50,000 from the town for technology, and now we don't have that anymore. So in the town, we have to look at our budgets and really see what is necessary. And especially in this environment, everything's necessary. So how do you how do you do that? You know, this year was a tough one.
How do you see working with the school department around that?
The school department, we're very lucky that we have a wonderful superintendent and an assistant superintendent. Our Christine Haley, who is our business director, is outstanding. She's been here forever. Dealing with five different districts and five different schools, school committees, I can't imagine what we're doing, because we have the out-of-district vocational, we have out-of-district, we have our three towns that we also have to pay for, plus we have our 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 own town. So it is very difficult to have them understand all the roles of what is needed. The the two principals are Dr. Whipple and Mr. Vanberry are wonderful. We have numerous conversations with them regarding budget and making sure that we understand what is necessary, what's coming down the pipe. And you have to have those good conversations with them and make sure that we are understanding, you know, what's going on in those schools, what is needed, what roles, what new roles do they need? Behaviorists are a huge thing, this, you know, coming up with the COVID just happening and having remote for this long, it's been difficult. So what new roles do we need? What roles are phasing out? You know, what what do we need in the schools? That's a huge dynamic, and we have to listen, I believe, to the administration and the principals, but we also have to listen to the parents. And so that's a huge role of the two of them. And for these past two years, that's been a difficult role when it comes to being on the school committee.
It certainly is very complicated, and it's it's not going to change anytime soon. So there's a lot to consider. Now, what do you believe is the biggest challenge facing our schools today? And how do you think the school committee can help?
So one of the biggest challenges really is keeping our kids healthy and safe. Social media is a big dynamic with me. It's getting younger and younger, and having that safety for the schools, safety is a big priority to me. You know, getting it out there early on with students, understanding safety, understanding, you know, we do the Alice drills at our school. But really, you know, as we've gone to the pandemic, I would say the pandemic was our biggest role for the past two years, but now we're phasing off that. But the health and safety of our students is still extremely important. COVID is still out there. So making sure that these students are staying safe and healthy and that we're still doing those mitigating circumstances to make sure that parents and students are feeling safe are really important things to me regarding the schools. And of course, keeping one of the best school systems going, you know, making sure that we have the best teachers and we're paying them at a good rate so they're not leaving, that we have all that infrastructure in place, that we have the art and the music that is extremely necessary for our students to be able to have that piece, and it's not just English or math, you know? So that's a huge dynamic to work with, but I I do think that we have a great team of people that want to do that, so.
And how do you think specifically for the school committee, and given that you are dealing with with different people and different committees, how do you feel that you can make an impact on the safety within the schools specifically?
And it is so important for us to have our voice of our towns. When we do have what's called a Unit 31 meeting, which is the the different towns together, you really have to voice these opinions. And I think it's very important for the school committee to voice their opinion to the administrators and also for the parents and for, you know, I'm very open to having parents talking to us. Write me an email, tell me what's going on, how do you feel about it? We want them to have that voice, and we need to have that voice for them. So we need to be strong in what we're asking for and make sure that we're doing the right thing for our for our kids and for our parents and and for the students and making our teachers safe and our kids safe.
Thank you. What are your thoughts about how the district and the school can encourage involvement and participation from families?
This is a really hard one with families. You know, everybody works, and they have seven other things that are going on. They're doing their sports, they're doing everything, they're just getting dinner on the table, you know? That's a hard thing. How do we get them involved? How do we get these parents to go to those parent-teacher conferences? How do we get those those kids to stay involved in the school? And really, it's the outreach we have got to do that. We've kept those virtual parent-teacher conferences, which are so important, especially for me as a parent who works. I love these virtual parent-teacher conferences. I think it's so important to keep that aspect of not trying to find a time at 2:00 in the afternoon to go to the school for my 10 minutes with my teacher. But that's a thing that we have to work with. Parents are so busy, kids are so busy, how are we keeping them engaged with the school, with school, just engaged in school as it is? My son has ADHD and ADD. Keeping him engaged in school is very difficult. He's a sixth grader. I work very strongly with the special education team with his IEP. We're very lucky that Marie Grable has brought in some of those programs to our schools, so they're not going out of district, they're staying in our district and staying with the with their peers, which is great. But for parents, we have to be strong for our kids, too. You know, we're they're a parent, and I always say, like, we're the one that loves them the most, so we're the ones that have to do the most for them. And so we have to advocate for our own kids. But, you know, as a school member, I have to advocate for the parents that don't have that voice as well. So when they come to me and say, I'm having an issue, I want to advocate for them. That's an important piece of that, because some parents aren't as strong as I am or or will say as vocally as I am. So I want to be able to hear from that parent that says, I'm having an issue with that teacher, or I'm having an issue with this program. And we take that to, you know, to the, you know, the principals and to the superintendent to get the help that they need.
Are there other are there other things or other other ways you think that you can further encourage more involvement across the board with families?
I definitely think so. I think programming is is a big deal to me. I think the more program we have, the more outspoken we are, the more transparent we are. It's great. We still keep our Zoom meetings for a school committee, well, it's Google Meet, I'm not a fan, I like the Zoom better, but I think it's great. I will keep the the Zoom going until I can't have it anymore. Kingston just brought into a bylaw that we have to have all meetings be virtually so that parents or anyone in the town can be able to to see it in real time. And that's important to me, because I want people to be able to get to this. Not everybody can get to the intermediate school at 6:00 on a, you know, on a Monday. But if we do it virtually, you know, most people can jump on, whether at the ball field or they're doing, you know, they're doing dinner, and they can jump on if they have a question. So to me, being able to be accessible to the parents and to the students is really important. And I think for the principals as well and for the superintendent, you know, that's not a, you know, nine-to-five job that they have, you know? So they try to be accessible on other things, like going to, for me, going to some of those ballgames or going to other things in the community so I can talk to parents, that's a big, big deal. And I always say to them, you know, go out in the community and see the students, not just during school committee or during school, but during other events, you know, during pickup and drop off, you know, having those conversations.
Excellent. Thank you. So many townspeople might think that money is the solution to improvement, but what significant improvements do you feel can be made in Kingston that can occur without money?
So, you know, structurally, you have to have money to to fix bathrooms or roofs or those types of things. But we can do infrastructure here that doesn't cost money. We really can't. There are programs that we can do from within the schools that the music program in itself has grown exponentially with our music teacher. He's done now chorus, we're doing instruments. And there are things that we do with a lot of grant grant funding that we've gotten, but it doesn't cost us us money. But really, we got to think outside the box. We can't always be asking for more money, more money. When it comes to certain positions, like a behaviorist, important. But what can we do internally? You know, art courses, we doing art classes with the rec now. It's great, the students are able to get out there and do more with that, but it's not costing us any money, right? So our, you know, our our teachers, like, hey, I'll do I'll do some courses with the rec department, or, you know, I'll do some after-school activities with the technology and the Minecraft. Those kids really love it, and it's costing us nothing. It's the teacher's time that they want to be able to do. And I tell you, the Minecraft club and the technology club are very popular at the at the intermediate school. And so the art club will be coming up as well. And I think the music, the instruments this year were fabulous, and that's not costing us but the time of that teacher or that person to come in and do that. And the students love it. And I'm a big art music person, so, you know, that's, to me, that's one of the bigger ones. My son also likes Jim.
So in towards the end, after we after we finish the questions, we give you a couple of minutes for your closing remarks. You can address anything that wasn't brought up, anything particularly you want viewers and voters to know about you and your candidacy. So I will let you go ahead and address directly the viewers, if you'd like.
Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate you taking the time to meet with me today and talk about the schools. And to me, I believe that the schools are important. And so what I talked about today, about the schools and safety and students and the administrators, what I want this, what I want people to know is that I've been on this committee for nine years. I've been through so much. I've been on many numerous subcommittees. This is not a a committee where you can go once a month and say, I'm going to come once a month on a Tuesday. This is a committee that is consistently meeting, you know, when it comes to a subcommittee. I'm on Pillar Rec Collaborative, which is for the special education out of district. I also go to many different meetings, I go to the Silver Lake meetings, I try to go to other meetings, especially capital planning, FENCOM, just so I can hear what's going on, because they are talking about the schools. And it's important to be able to be that person that goes and does outside of those meetings and talking to the parents. And you're getting emails daily from parents, and it's not that, it's a volunteer position, there's no money to it. I've been the chair now a little over a year after Eric Cronin had stepped down. And I enjoy really being the chair and being with my committee. I think the committee's wonderful, but I'm not a chair of one. It's a chair, it's a five-person committee. It's a great committee of really strong parents who really and community members who want to be part of it. And I like to say that it's not just me that's going to make these decisions, it's the full committee and the administration. So although I'm one person that I really feel confident, that I try to listen to parents and students and and the administrators and try to really understand what's going on with this town, but also, I'm not one-sided. You know, it's very, it's very easy to say, I'm anti-mask, I'm mask, I, I, you know, I'm ADL, I'm not ADL, or, you know, there's certain things you want to talk about, critical race theory, some people are really interested in now. But it's important to know that you have to be streamlined, and you have to listen to every side and both sides, and you have to understand what is going to be best and make the right decisions. And so I really try to do that and not have my own agenda when I go into this and that I'm going to have the what the students and the parents and the administration are looking at and make it the right decision for the town. And it is difficult with what's going on. It's been very hard these past few years as DESC has come in with their mandates and taken their mandates off, and every five minutes they change something. So, you know, the ebb and flow of what's happening in schools, you have to go with it. And, you know, if you want to be on this committee, it's important to know that it's going to be something that takes your time, it's something we love and that we enjoy. But there are meetings, there are negotiations, there are, you know, probably about 10 committees that we have that are subcommittees that you have to be involved in as well. So sometimes you're not going to see your kids play, or you're not going to be able to, you know, have dinner with your family, because you have to go to these meetings. But my family understands now, they they get it, they have their, like, lucky times for dinner. So but I'm very lucky in that aspect. So I appreciate the time that everybody has taken today to to listen to me and to to be able to hear that. So I'm very proud to be on this committee.
Thank you so much for being a part of this and coming here today for your interview. We really wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. And we'd like to, for our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, pacTV.org/elections, for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please make your voices and your choices heard by voting in the election on April 23rd. Thank you and good day.